你好，这是我的新同事。我需要你帮我处理一个紧急的文件。这个文件是关于项目计划的， 我们得尽快把项目推进到月底。这个文件里有项目部的汇报， 还有项目部的会议记录， 还有项目部的财务报表。这些都非常重要， 我需要你帮忙把它们汇总一下。然后， 最后再把所有文件汇总一下， 然后发给我。好的， 我会尽快完成。[S01]谢谢。
So there it goes, okay.
For the masks to wear, you'll have to give to that person.
But the good man's gonna do everything you hope for.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna ask, but I think Dr. Hoody was so excited.
We get rid of banks?
Oh, no, I was not.
Yeah, I didn't know you were on board.
You don't have to know.
Man, I thought that was crazy.
Yeah.
Follow the meeting order. We have Kevin as absent today. Everyone else is present. Pleasure to lead with an invocation of the United States of America.
All right, teaching salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice pro. Okay, oh, bow heads. Dear God, just thank you for tonight, just thank you for the chance for us to come here and just help us to make wise decisions for our school and God just please continue to bless our school and God just be, I know we've got a lot of sick kids right now and sick adults and just please be with them and I know flu's been going around some and God just let us all have a good Christmas holidays and let's just remember the reason for this season and just like for any given in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from last board meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting.
Okay, second. All in favor? All right, item four, adoption of the agenda.
No additions or modifications.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So long.
Second.
All in favor? All right, old business, the next board meeting will be January thirteenth. That will be January thirteenth, twenty six. New business, sixteen section, Ms. Julah.
So on sixteenth section, the last board meeting, we talked about the two delinquent leases that we were gonna bring some options for you guys to approve tonight, so I'm gonna go through those options and let y'all decide how y'all wanna proceed forward with these. All right, so for Mr. Williams, because Mr. Williams' lease expired in February of 2022, he's now a residential holdover tenant and he's being charged month to month at the last rental rate, so he currently owes $1,001.6994 and this amount is gonna continue to increase monthly, so I need you to make a motion to approve one of these options. I've got three of them, so this first option, which is the attorney's recommendation, this option would allow Mr. Williams to bring his past due balance current with the sixty to ninety days, if he does, the board can issue a new lease and based on a current appraisal. So factors in support of this option would include difficulty releasing this parcel, avoiding an empty residence that would attract unauthorized occupants, cost of eviction, staff time, and just maintaining an enforceable lease with updated terms if we renewed the lease. All right, so this, so they would just allow him to stay on the property, get his balance caught up, and then renew the lease. So the second option is to begin removal eviction and pursue collections, so I just wanna make a note that the collection fees are capped at 25% of what is actually collected, so that, you know, which may limit the effectiveness of using an agency by the time all the cost incurred, what it would cost to pursue the collection, so you're looking at a cap of $300, a little less than $300 that we could spend to collect that rent. All right, so the third and the last option is gonna be to begin the removal and eviction process but choose to forego collection efforts due to the cost outweighing the likely financial return and just focus on the future of that lease. Y'all have any questions on that?
So when do we have to make a motion on these three options? Is this starting today, I mean, this meeting?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion to accept the first option recommended by the board.
Okay, we got a motion to accept option one. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All right.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, except for Mr. Tidwell's options, this is this commercial lease that's been terminated, this is the 110 River Road and it was previously terminated, his outstanding balance is $2,0568, the board needs to make a motion to approve one of these options and I've got two of them, so the first option would be to pursue collections with the same 25% collection fee limitation, so you're looking around $650 would be our cap, $650. The second option, which is recommended by our board attorney, is to forego collection efforts due to the minimal expected recovery and obligation that it would cost the district.
I make a motion that we accept option two, the recommendation of the board attorney.
Got a motion, second? All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, item B is a clear handbag policy for athletic events.
Which I had, Coach Moore came up to me and he was asking about our clear handbag policy and, and so we did not have one and so I kind of, I looked at, if you look on high school activities, they've got a whole bunch of them on there and I tried to go through and kind of pick out things from there, most of them were, almost everyone I saw, they had like a size that, you know, max size, you could have like 12 inches by six inches by 12 inches, and then the, I mean, and they get, would give pictures of examples of what was acceptable, was not acceptable, and so that's what I tried to do, and bottom line is they'd have to be clear bags, the only exception would be like if it's a medical bag or, and it might be like a diaper bag or something, but those will still be searched when they come in the game, and this is for athletic events only. So that's what I'm recommending, that if it's not clear, that shows some examples of cases where it doesn't work, you know, where they're not clear, then those would not be allowed in the game, so if somebody came up to the gate, we'd tell them, you know, we just can't allow them and we're gonna try to, you know, advertise it and let everybody know, communicate it, but if somebody showed up, then we'd just ask them to go back to their vehicle, put it in their vehicle, and then come on back in the game. So I'm asking that you approve this, are you got any questions, I guess should I ask that first?
It says athletic events, is that all events basically that we're hosting?
Yeah.
Basketball, football, baseball?
Mm-hmm.
Soccer?
Yeah.
All right. And this looks similar to what the universities have already adopted for the most part.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the clear handbag policy as presented.
All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, item C would be personnel.
To be in compliance with Mississippi Code 37921, if you are related to any of the following personnel will be considered a voter upon, please recuse yourself from the school board meeting until a motion and a vote is made. I'd like to make the following faculty recommendations for the 2526 school year, and if you refer to person one, personnel one on your laptops, please, and you're gonna see some recommendations, and then you're gonna see some residing people, and you're gonna see one person transferring.
Can I get a motion to accept personnel one?
Make a motion, man.
Motion, can I get a second on personnel one? Second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Item B, school calendar for 2026, 2027 school year.
What we have in front of you is two calendars, one of them is for the 2627 school year is a calendar that includes the fall break, well, this is something that we had talked about a little bit earlier and, and there are many school districts across the state that are doing this, I want you to notice that in order to do the fall break, that I was students, we would have to back up to end July, July that I was students, we would have to back up to end July, July twenty-eighth is the, is the first day, that school year would start for professional development and students' first day would be on July thirty-first, okay, now, also notice that graduation is on both of these calendars, as we had talked about last year, is on a Thursday at the end of the year, okay, so you take a look at that, graduation on a Thursday, now, the, the basic difference in, in the two calendars is that we start a little bit earlier, but they get the whole week off for fall.
Is that the October fourth, fifth, is that this?
Uh, yes, fifth through the ninth.
Okay.
Okay, whereas they have been.
Thanks, Doc.
So they have been, that's, that's the big difference in the two calendars, now, if you glance over at the normal calendar of what we've been doing, then you're going to see that, um, you know, the thirtieth, thirty-first of July and, um, and, and the third of August are professional development days for our staff, and then the students' first day will be the fourth, okay, so it's basically just moving it around just a little bit, but notice then that fall break is one day, the twelfth in October, now, um, again, graduation on Thursday at the end of the year and, um, which is something that we've had discussion about in, in the last couple of years, um, the fall break thing, if, if we have, if we go with the fall break calendar for a week instead of one day, then we fully anticipate that at the very beginning of the school year, you could have, um, you know, some people complaining about the fact that we're starting school so early, okay, and teachers having to report so early, that we anticipate that, but we also know that when they enjoy that whole week off, that's going to make up for all the differences, and the people that have gone to the fall break schedule, I think they, I think it's been positive and they've liked it, it's been a positive thing, we think we found a way to get around the, um, the issue of working two or three days at the end of the month in regards to pay and right, Julie?
Correct.
We've got a way to get around that, which was something that we were worried about before, okay, in the past.
So really, so really we only lose two days, well, not lose, we, we only start school two days earlier, so instead on the thirty-first, we start on the second, which is a Friday.
That's right.
So you get a week for two days?
Well, I know when I was teaching at Coville, we, we had a week.
Fall break.
Fall break, yes.
How does the, what does it look like December, I know that's always an issue too, is when we start?
December.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Okay.
I was just curious, because I, I think I brought some up last year about when the holiday, when it falls.
They have a solid, solid two weeks and they come back on the fifth, the students come back on the fifth of January, you know, that's basically, um, you know, the schedule, you know, where, the sk, that schedule for Christmas would end, um, being the same.
But it's showing on January, the Friday is part of the Christmas break, right? The first is Christmas break.
That is correct.
And then, okay, the fourth, you do have a, so you have a teacher day before they start.
On the fourth.
That's what I think I brought up last year.
You do have a teacher's day.
They wanted a day.
But you, but you also have it on the other calendar too.
Okay.
Both calendars, you have the teacher, and we do, the teachers do like that day to get acclimated again, and we do professional development, students come the next day.
I think, I think last year it worked out where they started.
That's right.
And then, new teachers, new classes, all, you know.
That's right. And we had only, we had only done that a few times where we had the break in there, if I'm not mistaken, you know, but, but it, you know, either calendar, same, the, the difference is the fall break.
Yeah, and I think why that became an issue recently is the, the new block schedule because so much changes between semesters.
That's right.
With students and teachers, it's not like you're sitting there with the same group.
True. That's right.
Figure everything out.
You gotta redo, that's right, start no.
So I like that extra day before. Okay, so we got to decide if we want a fall break or not.
I go for a fall break, for a week.
I'm going to take y'all's, uh, recommendation on that since you don't.
Okay, so you need a motion?
Right.
Okay, um, I would like to say that we would like to approve, um, the calendar with fall break.
Okay, I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor? Unanimous?
Now, y'all keep in mind that if we spot something on the calendar that we missed or there's some mistakes somewheres, and, and there could be, I mean, we, we, we look at it real hard, but if we see something, we bring it back to you, let you look at it, but we'll, but we'll get that fall break in there.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, item A, approval of fiscal year twenty-six consolidated application.
Okay, I would like to ask the board for approval for the FY twenty-six consolidated application with eighty-five percent of our allocations totaling at over one point eight million dollars, for Title One budget, we have one point five million, which we spend for salaries and benefits of thirteen elementary teachers and nine assistant teachers, salary and benefits of ga, guidance counselor, technology to require twenty percent for CSI, for GM, for the Grenada Middle School, percentage of salary and benefits of federal program director, percentage, percentage of salary and benefits of parent coordinator, for Title Two budget, which is, uh, a little over one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, almost sixteen thousand dollars goes to Kirk Academy for professional development expenses, salaries and benefits of lead teachers and instructional specialists, for Title Four budget, almost eighty thousand, um, is allocated for that budget so far, almost ten thousand goes to Kirk Academy for technology, supplies and technology to support well, well-rounded STEM activities, almost sixty thousand on dual enrollment in A and P classes for our high school students, and safe and healthy school supplies and equipment, we have not been awarded Title Five as of yet, in the past, we have used majority of those funds to purchase technology for our students, so I need, um, Mr. Biddy and Dr. Dagnall to sign off on that for me, thank you, I will, uh, once the board is, uh, once the, uh, application is completely finalized, I will submit, uh, the total application to you all, you should have it in next month, board agenda.
And how much are we giving Kirk Academy again, twenty thousand or ten?
We're giving them sixteen for Title Two, which they've gotten there for ye, years, but this year they act, uh, actually asked for Title Four, which was totaled about ten thousand, all they're going to use for technology.
So that's twenty-six thousand?
Yes.
Twenty-six thousand, and, and just for clarity, again, the, I know with private schools, like, I know we have to, I know public schools have to, to give, but what, what, is that state law or is that?
It's called equitable, equitable services, they're entitled to a certain percentage of our, our award out of Title Two and Title Four, and we have to give it to them.
Right, is there a reason they hadn't, uh, asked for, what, Title Four?
In the past, no, I don't believe they were aware of the fact that they could get it, and in collaborating, uh, in talking with other private schools, the new, um, current, had, I tried not to use that word, I think it goes about another title now, but the, yeah, the, um, he, uh, realized that they could get it and he requested it this year, Title Four, this will be the first year we're giving him that.
Is it percentage based?
Yes. Any more questions?
So you need a motion and a vote on that to accept?
No, sir, I just need you to sign it because I have to upload to MD that I presented it to you all.
And then next time?
I will give you a copy of the final bud, budget.
And then you need a motion and a vote.
No, just.
No, you don't.
I won't need anything, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, CSI, um, so this was our middle school and, um, we, we had, don't have, the, the budget has not been released yet to it, so a lot of it we can't do yet as far as with the funds that, and I think that's what Dr. Harrigan is talking about, something fixing to be released and then they'll add things to it, but when I was talking to Mr. Harrison and Ms. Bloodworth today, uh, Monday about it, one of the big things they were talking about was peer tutoring, and, uh, they went to a school improvement workshop and, um, a lot of the presenters were presenting on this peer tutoring where teachers would pick a group of students they felt would do a good job peer tutoring and they would pair with kids and then they would do tutoring like that during learning strategies classes or PE or, um, or like, uh, or sports when it's going on if a kid's having trouble with, uh, with their academics, and, um, and then Mr. Harrison's going to train the, uh, the, the students about the tutoring, they'll be given like forty-five minutes at a time to do that, it's going to start after Christmas, but he's, he said, people have seen a lot of improvement with this, so this is kind of new, so I wanted you to be aware of that, many of the other things are very similar, I think they're, you know, they've got some days left with kids first, um, Ms. Nobles, now she's new at the middle school, she's been helping at the high school with English, uh, does a really good job and she's working with teachers on instruction, and so we've been using her some, and they're sending them to a workshop, it's called All Teachers In, and it's for inclusion teachers and gen ed teachers, they're going to send a few teachers to that, and, um, so that's a few of the things that are going to be coming up, so, again, I just wanted to report this to you like I will be each month, um, and I, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Have you all factored in the new, uh, cut score accountability?
Uh, we've, we've been looking at that with the district as a whole and at the individual schools, because I mean, it's, it's, it's an increase, but we don't know with CSI what the cut's going to be, I mean, they look at it each year, it was two eighty-four this past year, and, um, and they average, you know, the last three years to determine that, it's, it's different than, than the individual schools and, um, which we were, I think we, we were like at two eighty this past year, but the three-year average, we had one year that was really low a, and, and so I think the average was like two fifty-five, but that low year's going to go out in two years, it won't go out this upcoming year, and so we're shooting for a goal of like three fifteen and.
So if it's going to take us two years to make it beyond that low score.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's going to, so we're going to be there.
Yeah.
We anticipate for a couple of years.
Now, you, you count two years as the remainder of this one and then that twenty-six, twenty-seven school year?
Yes, same, but these two, that we should have a shot at, depending if they don't move the cut too much.
Right.
You know, but nobody got out this past year, it was one school that got out and the only reason they got out was the in camp, and you like to have to have ten kids in a group in order, uh, to be considered in this and, and they dropped below the ten kids in the group, so it's, it's difficult, you make, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, item G is approval of employee petitions for out of district.
Uh, we have, um, two, um, two students actually, um, three-year-old in pre-K and a kindergarten student, last name is Neely, and they are coming from Carroll County, and, um, of course, the, um, parent works in the school district, so they're able to come into our school district, we ask you to please approve these two students into the district.
You got a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, ladies, superintendent's report.
Okay, um, you know, it, it was mentioned earlier during the prayer that we have a lot of teachers and students who are sick, and we do, one, one day earlier in the week, um, you know, this past week, we had fifty-eight percent of the students, you know, that were at school, okay, all right, now, that was at one school, this was upper, at, at face that grades three, four, and five, now, they, they seem to hit the worst problem with attendance and sickness in the schools at upper, and we're still fighting through it, now, we are having some absences at, at lower elementary and at middle and high, but, but they seem to, boy, there's so many of them that hit third, fourth, and fifth grade, so we, um, we had, we have lots of absent teachers, I think today we had eighteen absent teachers, which means when you have that happen, then you've got to double up classes, you've got to take all the classes and put them, you can't possibly have at that particular school eighteen subs coming in, you, we don't have the manpower, you know, so then we're doing the best we can, now, this comes at a time that we're getting ready to test the kids for the DCAs, okay, which is, you know, I mean, if you want a true reading of, of where we're lining up, then, you know, teachers are there, students are there, you're prepared and you're getting ready, well, now, we're getting ready to test kids very soon on the DCA, so we're kind of worried about that, you know, because that could impact some scores, we hope not, um, but it could, and so, and, and, uh, another thing that was mentioned a few minutes ago is that, um, the cut scores for the state are changing, it's already been approved by the state, the cut scores are changing, now, that, you get, you got to know, everybody needs to understand that that is going to impact every school district in Mississippi, so when the cut scores change, I'm going to, a simple, um, way of understanding this is if a ninety is an A in a class that you take, a ninety is an A, if they move that score to ninety-four, then you're going to have a lot fewer people make that A, all right, even though we score quite well, the percentage, they, they use the percentage, a percentage basis of schools as to how many's probably going to be an A, B, C, and so on, and, and, um, unfortunately, we, you know, we don't have any say-so about this, I mean, it, it happens, it's prescribed in law that this takes place back when the accountability model first came into being, and, um, and, and we understand that, you know, it just, it doesn't make us feel any better because we've all worked so hard to be able to learn what we are doing and, and make great progress, and all across Mississippi this has happened, but now, when they fool with those cut scores coming up, then it's going to have a dramatic impact, and so what I would appeal to everybody to understand that school is much more than just a score, it's much more than if you're an A or a B, it's much more than that, there's a lot of factors to consider, and so the education, the quality of the product, the preparation of getting kids ready for college, how they go into college, or the workforce, I mean, that's much more of an indicator of what success is in a school district, okay, so I just want you to understand that, that, that's going to be something that's going to be coming up, um, and, and, and it could impact us, um, the, I, I wanted, I wanted to mention that, um, we just got word that, that we received a grant and the grant, the Twenty-First Century Grant, we just got word that we received it, and then this for the elementary school, it's one point six million dollars, thank you Lynn Russell for putting that together and making that happen, and, and I want to tell you, since two thousand and six, we have earned twelve point two million dollars in that Twenty-First Century Grant, twelve point two million, and so, again Lynn, thanks for doing great work and, and putting all that together, I, I know you had other people helping you do this over the years and trying to make it all work, but, but we are very, very excited about the Twenty-Second Century Grant, okay, um, another thing on the facilities, progress on the middle school, it takes time, but if you go off in, if you could look in the hoes of where they're digging in the steel that they're putting in, you'll see that they are making progress, and we're excited about that, it's going to, it's going to take a little while to get the job completed, but we want it done correctly, um, we are beginning to work on the EIC, the newspaper building, okay, and we're in, in motion doing a lot of things, we are in the process of putting on a new roof on that building and to take care of a lot of things. a lot of things in regard to that to get it ready so that we can, we can use it as the entrepreneurial center and try to make that happen. So we're excited about that, making it halfway. Um I wanted to also mention that in the last month, we've had very few hits on our computers at the school, okay? You know, we watch every computer, our principals do, and I think they check them something, um Tina, I think, I think he said four times a day, that they check it, they look at it to find out, you know? Um yeah, and and that is making a difference. We had very few hits this past, this past week. We talk about it in principals' meetings, and we're, and 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 that is because of the constant awareness by staff. And so a very special thanks to our staff who work so hard to make that happen. And that that's all I have on the superintendent's report.
The superintendent of that program uh has a title for it where they check the their history and all that stuff?
Oh, the comput- the history, the-
Something safe.
Learn Safe, Learn Safe.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah. And it's excellent, and and um there are, I mean, they, you you can, you can have other safeguards that are in place, and we have them, but we we decided along, you know, several years ago that that we need to do everything we can to to be able to look at our computers that our students are using, our teachers are using, what's happening in the classroom, so that we can make sure that people are doing things in a proper manner. And uh and it's worked. I mean, they have really, it's made a big difference, it really has. So Learn Safe, we'd strongly recommend. I worry about school districts that are in a position that they're not doing anything of this nature, because when they have problems in the school district and they can trace it back to a computer, then what about that school district? And is there any liability for the actual district? And so we wanna be a step ahead on all of this stuff, and we're and we're proud of that work. Thanks for the question. You bet.
Moving on to uh section I, approval of junk and surplus bids.
Yes, I'm asking for the board to approve and accept the bids uh that were sold for Chromebooks. It's just um some old Chromebook parts, yes.
Motion to accept the bids for junk. First, second, any discussion? All in favor? You're good. Unanimous? All right, um disposal of special education records.
Yeah, this is a standard thing for us. I'm gonna just read the statement to you. The school district will destroy special education records on February seventeenth twenty twenty-six in accordance with local, state, and federal guidelines. Uh parents, guardians, um students may pick up records from the Special Education Office located at eighteen fifty-five Jackson Av- Avenue between the dates of January fifth and February thirteenth for former students um with disabilities who are twenty-six years of age or older on number four December thirty-first. A list of records will be destroyed, to be destroyed will be maintained by the Office of Special Education. Parents will be notified by the school district website, social media, and the local newspaper. So we're gonna destroy special education records, and we're gonna be in compliance with local, state, and federal guidelines. We're just letting you know that, and then we need a motion and a vote to do that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the disposal of special education records as described? A motion, can I get a second? Second? All in favor? Unanimous? Section K, child nutrition summary report for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
This is a report um that, you know, that has to do with child nutrition. Um the total schools with everyone, three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two fall into this category. Students directly certified through Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program or SNAP, a thousand and seventy-five. Um you know, we're looking, we have students who are certified, non-students certified through other programs, seventy stu- seventy-six students approved on free eligible, eleven hundred and seventy-two students approved on free eligible as well, based on the size and income information of that family. Approved on the reduced price eligibility, three hundred and ninety fall into that category. You just need to know that information, and this is something that we keep up with under child nutrition. So please, if you would, a motion and a vote to accept that report.
Can I get a motion to accept that report?
Salute.
Second? All in favor? Unanimous? Uh item L, acceptance of reverse auction.
Okay, um following the board's prior approval to advertise advertise and conduct reverse auction for the holographic telepresence equipment, we request approval to accept the winning bid. The um reverse auction was conducted in accordance with Mississippi purchasing law, which mandates this process for procurements if it exceeds seventy-five thousand dollars. The selected bid meets all specifications um on this equipment, and we recommend that the board approve the bid from Proto, which is at seventy-one eleven Havenhurst Avenue in California, um in the amount of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, and authorize the issuance of purchase orders accordingly. This is from money that um, you know, part of the money that we have been so fortunate to receive to work with the EIC and to develop all the new programs that we have in place. But this is a really, this is a really nice thing, and it's state-of-the-art, and you'll see when we get it, we learn how to operate this equipment.
Is that supposed to be available by the end of this school year or beginning of next school year?
It's it's gonna come in over the Christmas break, and when it comes in over over the break, then the next thing will be to learn how to operate this this thing. And it's gonna be a life-size image thing where, you know, it it'll, it it could be something, I mean, it's, you know, it'll, it'll, it could be someone speaking. It's a, could be a person from somewhere else that we're getting this image sent to us, and then it looks like that person standing in front of that classroom talking to the kids. I mean, it is state, and it's-
I look in love. It's pretty neat.
Oh, it's good. I mean, it it's like, it it's wild. You could have Jim Keith standing there saying- Saying all kinds of, it's it's really something. But it puts you in a, in a total different league. Without the support that we've had and doing, you know, with all these new things that we're trying to do with the entrepreneurial center, this would never be possible for a school to be able to do this. So we're excited about it, and it's gonna be good. So we ask you to please um approve this.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the reverse auction and approve the bid?
Salute.
Second? Yeah, first and second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Item L, declaration of junk and surplus.
I'm requesting the board to approve the disposal of the junk surplus items.
Salute.
Second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? And then deletion of fixed assets?
Asking um the board to approve these fixed assets to be deleted.
Got a motion, can I get a second? All in favor?
Chris, bring his crap. The um, when we sell those at the uh declaration of junk and surplus, do we, and and it may be in the budget line, I missed it, do we get like a report on what we're able to sell?
Through gov deals, yeah, we typically get a report. Is that what you're meaning?
Right, is it like um, like are we giving it in our, like on the budget line, like when we approve the budget? Is it in one of those budget lines on what we've sold and what what we're making on-
Yeah, yeah, there's just um, there's a kind of a generic account that's just sale of equipment, and so it all goes there. So it is a specific line item on the financials that, you know, we're given a budget for it, yes.
Okay, and then on the deletion of the fixed assets, um how do we go about deleting something like, what what makes it deletable, what do we do with the deleted items?
It's just, so there's paperwork behind it, and the approval comes from you guys, the paperwork's done, and then in our software, we, it gets deleted out, and we keep, and we keep the paperwork.
So it goes to the C I A, and that goes to the top of the declaration of junk and surplus?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But in some items, so it's clearing out inventory, but some stuff is like-
Right.
Not necessarily sold, it could be trashed or or stolen or missing or something.
The dumpster.
Yeah, not all of it, it's gonna be sellable.
But a lot of the computers, we've had, we've had some success with some of the computers.
Like the Chromebooks y'all accepted tonight, they're they're kinda considered junk Chromebooks. They're not really, they're ones with broken screens or broken keyboards, but we're able to still sell those.
At heart.
Yep, yep. So.
Need a motion to accept the uh deletion of the fixed assets?
I make a motion.
A motion, can I get a second? Second? All in favor? Unanimous? Uh review of financial statements and activity fund transactions.
So I'm uh asking the board to approve the October financial statements and activities of fund transactions. If y'all have any questions.
So it's usually like the budget or accounting's at its one of its lowest peaks between now and January and February.
Till we start getting back to the higher months of our ad- loan tax.
We're toward the bottom.
That's right. So, and you know, too, you got that CT money we have up front, that five million, that three million, so as we start spinning that down, you're gonna see the drop in cash for the total, so.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to file and receive the financial statements?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, I don't think we have public comments. You got public comment?
No.
They're not, they're not.
No, it's on the bills.
Oh.
The bill's paid.
Why?
She got me too. I I can play with something else.
No, we said there was no comment, so she's up there.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
You don't have to go.
Say it.
Got a motion, second? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, um executive session.
Yes, we need to go into executive session personnel.
All right. All right, get a motion, can I get a second? Second, all in favor? All right.